Mayor Dave.
That's what his little friend, Mayor Frank.
I saw him at the fair.
He's been every day out there.
Oh, he's loved every minute of it. Oh, good. He was, he was the one that took over for me two, two states I worked. So we've got.
He's a talker.
Oh, yes, he is. That's why he's good at the meeting.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, seven o'clock, call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Barlow.
Here.
Bergeron.
Here.
Brem.
Here.
Deveroy.
Here.
McLean.
Here.
Rezegi.
Here.
Rocha.
Here.
Stensel Barton.
Here.
Tassava.
Here.
Please rise for pledge. Keep standing, keep standing up, Marvin.
The pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda? Any additions or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Rocha to approve the agenda as presented. All clear? Say aye.
Aye.
Go same. Also in your packet, you have the minutes of the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting minutes. Any corrections or additions to that?
Your Honor, I move that we approve the minutes of the July fourteenth, regular meeting as written.
Second it.
Okay, motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Barlow, to approve the minutes of the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting minutes. Roll call.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Rocha, I'm sorry, Rezegi.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Okay, public hearing, we have none tonight. Public comment, this time anybody would like to get up, talk to, address the council, I'll give you three minutes, tell me who you are. Anybody? Okay, formal recognitions and presentations, presentation from Dave Hatfield, County Commissioner, he's not here. Presentation from Allen Edwin. Ryan? Tell us who you are and who you're with and.
My pleasure, my name is Brian Farkas, I'm the Director of Workforce Housing for Allen Edwin Homes. We are the state's largest home builder and we're looking at a project here. I believe Mr. King's gonna pull up my PowerPoint here. I sure hope so.
Yes.
If I could interrupt, is this part two of what we saw last?
You said this is the other contractor living here last time.
For that seven acres or something.
Four, my, yeah, gotcha.
Here with us.
Unless I got put in at the end. Oh, it got put in as eleven B.
Did you get the presentation I emailed this afternoon?
I did not receive it.
Okay. Sorry about that. So we're looking to pay just over a hundred thousand dollars for this property to develop workforce housing lots and market rate lots. As I said earlier, we're the largest home builder in the state of Michigan and we would like to put this under a one-year term of due diligence. After that, we'd like to develop it into probably seventeen to nineteen, single-family homes with twenty percent being workforce housing. So those would be rental and those would be priced to be affordable for those making, I'd say probably around a hundred thousand dollars a year, family of four. With that, any, any questions on the proposal or the letter that was sent?
Everybody get a chance to look at what was in your packet tonight, self-explanatory and, and Allen Edwin's have been in front of us before and it's pretty much the same thing they've always proposed, right?
Yep.
I'll start down here with Mike, do you get any questions, Mike, of this offer?
Yeah, if I understood right, you're looking for somewhere between sixteen and nineteen homes on seven point two acres?
Yep.
And they would all be individual houses, ranch-style, whatever.
Yep, two-story ranch-style, probably ranging from fourteen hundred square feet to eighteen hundred square feet.
Okay.
Three, four, and five-bedroom.
And so what, what would the price range be for the houses?
It'd probably be in the mid threes for the market rate homes, so we do kind of a combination. Thanks, my nightmare's over, it's like one of those nightmares from college where you stand up and your presentation's not there. We'd be looking probably for the market rate portion. So what we like to do when we do workforce housing is not to have it be a hundred percent income-controlled, but you've got eighty percent of the homes would be market rate, so those would be for sale for around three fifty. And then we'd have twenty percent of the homes that would be for lease, that would be probably around sixteen, seventeen hundred a month for a four-bedroom home on average. And as you can see behind you, some of the renderings we'd be looking at to do here, we'd develop it in one phase and we'd subdivide the land to a lot for individual ownership and we'd fully engineer it in compliance to match the local sewer system and water system and everything like that. Here's, so we've got two kind of site plans we're working with. Once we get through due diligence, we'll know what type of layout we should build and how it should build it, but here's the first one and then you can go to the second one, kind of a different approach using the existing stuff there. But the lots would be around eight thousand square feet, twenty-five-foot front setbacks, twenty-five-foot side setbacks, R-two zoning, you know, really consistent with what's already there in the neighborhood. We think it'd be a nice upgrade, you know, you'd see newer homes in the area. Remember the next one? So again, we build about a thousand homes a year and I want to hit on that because we develop on finished lots, we also develop our own lots, so we'll put in the infrastructure, we'll do the engineering, we undertake that. It's what we do kind of day in and day out. We're gonna develop probably three thousand lots next year, ourselves, in addition to the ones we buy and develop of others. The homes we build are extremely energy-efficient. You can see on, on here, our HERS score is very efficient. You probably save, from a traditional built home today, our homes come in probably about two thousand dollars a year cheaper to heat and cool. So we pressure-test every house, we put a fandore on it, we see where things are, air is escaping, we seal it up, so our homes are extremely energy-efficient, both the income contingent and the market rate homes. Over to the next one. Here's our vision for the homes, kind of a bigger picture of the renderings. You got the buy level there on the left, all the way up to a two-story colonial, I think they're really cute homes. Another angle. And so, a family of four for the missing middle, this would be twenty percent of the homes, would be a family of four making under a hundred and twenty-four thousand a year. I travel all over the state, I work with the state of Michigan putting these programs together and the shortage at this level cannot be overestimated. Families, you know, teachers, police, firefighters, middle-income families are having a really hard time finding housing and so as the state's largest home builder, to be able to design programs and deliver very quickly on high-quality homes that I think enhance the neighborhood but also include this component is, is extremely important and it would be part of an overall neighborhood where the homes are coming in at, in the mid-three hundreds. Here's where we build right now, now this is just the project map for workforce housing, we build all over the state with other programs, but you can see the kind of list of communities we're building and where we're building. Up in Traverse City, we're building a hundred and seventy, single-family homes right now. That was one of the first TIFs in the state, that's tax increment financing. That has allowed us to build right now, in October, when they approved it, I said, if you guys approve this, we'll start pay, we'll start moving dirt the next day. We've got about eight houses going up a month right now in Traverse City, it's quite a sight to be seen. And all over, down to Hillsdale and Three Rivers, all over the state, we're, we're very active with this program. Where we build, again, there's a lot of towns on there, but these are towns in Michigan where we build over fifty homes. And so the projected pace of what we want to do is we'd ask for one year of due diligence, so the way we buy land is, is, I think, pretty innovative, I've been with the company about three years, before that I used to work in Detroit in the mayor's office there and I wish we had contractors like this, where we don't want to own the land if we're not gonna do anything with it. This is not gonna be a situation where we buy the land and sit on it and you guys are asking us, what's going on, what's going on, what's going on? We'd want one year of due diligence. During that one year of due diligence, we would do, look at the zoning, if any zoning needs to happen, it would happen under that. We'd look for planning approvals, a TIF application, which I'll get to in a minute. Closing, so everything down to the permits would be taken care of before we close on the property. Once we close on the property, we would start the work then. We don't want to own land if we can't build on it, so rest assured, if this deal doesn't work, if we're lucky enough to be selected and we go through our due diligence and it doesn't work, there's not gonna be a messy reverter or title clause or anything like that, it'll just stay in city's hands. We intend to build it at a pace of about four to six a year and so we would complete the build-out in five years from the time of closing. So recently, I was with the Lieutenant Governor and the head of MISTDA announcing our plan to increase our pace of production by twenty-five thousand homes over the next ten years. That represents a thirty percent increase for our company, so we're working very closely with the state to execute on these deals and we've got probably three to four hundred already underway and either occupied or in construction. And so, the mechanism we're gonna use to accomplish this is a TIF. About two years ago, the state changed the, how, the law around TIFs and TIFs in Brownfield are used interchangeably, but it doesn't mean the sites contaminate, although we are aware there's some environmental issues we're gonna have to address. But the way it works is, and now this is publicly-owned property, so there's no taxes being paid on this property right now, so that blue box at the bottom, the existing tax base, you can ignore that because there's, there's no tax revenue going to the city right now. What we're gonna do is we're gonna go and invest a million or so dollars in getting the infrastructure in and building the houses, more than that. That's gonna increase the tax revenue. We're gonna capture a portion of that, all the ad of alarm taxes for a period of probably under twenty years to reimburse ourselves for the infrastructure that we're gonna put up front and reimburse ourselves for the affordable housing. Once we're paid back, all those nineteen homes, let's say, are gonna hit the tax rolls at once and be new tax revenue to the, to the city. This is a new law, it's allowed us to increase our production significantly. It allows us to, to build out faster, it allows us to take some of the risk out of it, home building is very risky. We all remember oh-eight and oh-nine and a lot of those home-building companies aren't here anymore, so this allows us to kind of get ahead of the risk curve, build out faster and, and build affordable housing. And again, here's the renderings, I think that's the last slide. Thanks for saving me.
You're welcome.
With that, any, any questions?
Do you have any other questions, Mike?
Glossed over?
Uh, no, I do not, thank you.
Okay.
Not this time.
Man?
You explained what TIF was, which was one of my questions.
Yeah.
And can you just, you also mentioned pilot, you know, payment in lieu of taxes, what is that?
So that's a different program.
Okay.
We would probably not use that here, but a payment in lieu of taxes is if you agree to have the house income-restricted, so same, same income that we'd be doing here, we would simply pay ten percent of the rent that we collect as a payment in lieu of taxes. And so those run for about fifteen years, those are really good tools on infill lots, so we've got a hundred and thirty-five under contract in Jackson, we're building about ten a year. And so lots that already have all the infrastructure built out, that's great for that. A project like this, where we're gonna have to probably put in a lot of infrastructure, pipes, you know, streets, everything like that, the TIF is the best model for us.
I do not have any questions.
One of the things that was brand-new to this scenario here is, is the the property, the trust. Would you be willing to negotiate any kind of a trust deal on that property up there, is that something you'd like to work with or not?
A land trust?
Yeah.
We have not, I've, I've talked to some guys that have founded some land trust up in Frankfurt. I think it's a very innovative plan. Probably wouldn't fit our timeline with this, those take longer to go. We would be targeting with the four or five homes, the same income group, and we would hold them for fifteen years as affordable. But the trust, we would have to find a third-party to hold the trust, we'd have to find people to manage it in perpetuity. That would not be something we do, we, we build the homes and we sell them and we lease them. Holding them in perpetuity in a trust would be something new to us.
Question? Marvin? Terry?
No, sir, I have nothing, thank you.
Yeah, so you talked about the cap on this would be about a hundred and twenty-three thousand, is that correct on the income on this?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, so my, my next question is, in Michigan, the average household income right now is a hundred and sixteen thousand, that's, that's the average aggregate and the growth is less than one percent when it comes to income.
Yeah.
And the projectives don't look much better for that for the next five or ten years. My question isn't necessarily the cap at which it's at, but what are we doing to help the, the people who, in aggregate, right now, the average household, to be able to reach sixty-nine thousand, which is the average income in the state of Michigan?
Yeah.
That the person has to be roughly, and I'm talking median age, thirty-five years old. So when we're looking at younger families in aggregate and that, so on and so forth, I really want to get those younger families into those households, into those homes, but it looks unaffordable for them, simply just when you're looking at the numbers of, of medium unless they're doing it. So though the cap is, is an interesting way, I'm really looking at that bottom number and going, what can we afford to allow these young families to actually get up in these households, because we have a ton of them here in Hastings and a lot of them are being priced out or being overpriced in rentals and so on and so forth.
Yeah.
So that's really my biggest concern, I just kind of wanted to hear what you had to say about that.
Excellent question, so I talked about the cap being a hundred and twenty percent AMI and that's the number I use, that's for a family of four.
Sure.
So we generally have our rents coming in at a hundred percent AMI, so we're lower than that. But it is not low income, it is missing middle, right? It is for a family that is making a decent income. And what I couldn't believe when I got into this three years ago is the complete shortage of housing at that level. And what happens is those families then buy a bracket down or lease a bracket down. So you're now pushing out the families that are in the eighty to sixty percent AMI.
Sure.
And they buy a bracket down, so this is not intended to solve all the housing problems, this is nineteen homes. We think delivering these units in this area can help, at least partly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And that is, we're not coming up with the caps, that's set by MISTDA.
Sure.
And so what we do is we back out the utilities from that as well, so the utilities come in about three to four hundred a month.
Okay.
So your total housing cost is gonna be under the cap. So if the cap, let's say, just ballpark, let's say the cap for rent was eighteen hundred dollars, we would back out the utilities from that and so your rent to us would be fifteen, sixteen hundred.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then we would have to certify to the city every year with the proof that their income verified and everything like that.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Excellent question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So do we want to give these two both a chance later in the, in the meeting to get up, talk again, or are we just gonna compare both proposals on the council, council here?
That's up to you. If you think there's additional information and you have more questions and they're here to answer, then.
Well, you know, it was two weeks ago that Marvin was here and, and talked about his program, I'd like to see him get up now and, and go over his.
Refresh.
Yep, just kind of refresh, you, you think you'd be able to do that tonight, Marvin? Okay. Thanks, Ryan.
Yep.
Really give him a chance and we'll decide later in the council meeting.
Well, as you already know, this is, these are two totally different proposals, two totally different ways of doing it. The housing thing is short as we talk about. When, when I look at what's happening in Hastings, when I look at a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar median income for a four-bedroom home, that's not Hastings right now. And the shortage of, of housing, I know Edmund Allen is building some hundred homes not too far from here. Our proposal obviously is rental, either townhouses or basically what the city is looking for is to get as much capacity on that land to solve the housing problem now so that hopefully you're wrong and housing, or the incomes come up more than one percent a year and at some point, the people in Hastings will be able to afford housing again. You know, it's, it's really a situation where that property is, is kind of secluded in a way. The homes in the area are seventy-five years old or older and so it, it behooves itself for rental or for apartments because of where it is. I'm not saying that people wouldn't buy houses there for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I know from my standpoint of view, if I had the choice of buying in a brand-new housing development, wherever it is in the city they're gonna build, for the same amount of money or very close, I probably would go that way. But the, the thing that we're proposing, I know he's talking about all these different programs, which at this point, I've never been really involved in those, we will be looking for some help, but we're not looking for twenty years' worth of tax abatement on, on, on taxes where you will basically get no taxes for twenty years. If I understand the way he's talking, that that's the way the TIF program works. Ours will be regular rentals, they will be market rate, like the other rentals that we have in the area, but the whole idea is affordable. And so that's really the, the difference in the proposal is, is affordable now to solve maybe as many as, we could put as many as a hundred units there, depending on how, how it's set up and how the city wants it set up. They're talking building four or five homes on the property per year and a five-year build-out type of a thing. That's a pretty slow build-out on that piece of property that's been setting for forty years or thirty years. Ours would probably be five years, but depending on how the rentals go and that type of thing, it may be much faster than that. We are aware that Myers is probably going to build a new Myers store a mile from here. Those employees are gonna live somewhere and they're gonna bring two, three hundred new employees in this area and they're gonna be more than likely the same kind of employees that are around here, twenty dollars an hour, twenty-two dollars, eighteen dollars. They can't afford a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, even if the rent's eighteen hundred dollars a month in a rental, it's, you know, so it's, it's a totally different way of looking at it. I, I think with the need for housing now, I mean, all the employers that I talk to, the biggest problem is you gotta drive twenty-five miles to work in Hastings because you can't find a place to live. Well, seventeen or eighteen homes is a really good start, but a hundred will solve the problem a lot quicker. So that's really, you know, in my mind, what the difference is. We will be looking for as much help as we can get from these different programs, the missing middle is available for new construction and we will be working on that to, to try and get it. There is infrastructure there, obviously, but not streets and that type of thing, there probably were gravel roads in there forty years ago, but now there's trees. So it's, it's a type of thing where we would probably start as soon as we can get permitting and that may take six months or, or eight months, depending on how it goes through the city and, and that type of thing for the rentals, but our goal is, is to get this thing built because I'm not getting any younger. So, any questions?
Let's start this in this time, John, you got any questions?
No, I have no question, John.
Terry?
No, I'm, I'm satisfied.
Marvin?
I'm fine, thank you.
Jordan?
I'm well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike? No questions?
Thank you, we'll make a decision towards the end of the meeting. The only question I had, Marvin, go back up there a minute. Sorry about that. I asked Brian this question, having to do with land trust, is that something that you'd be interested in?
No.
Okay.
No, we're, we're, I mean, I'm not familiar with that, but again, what that does is it kicks the can down the road and there's a lot of regulations and that type of thing, some of the MISTDA programs are very good, but there's an awful lot of reporting and that type of thing and we've not had to do that with the other MISTDA programs that we've done and so, you know, there, there's been some significant changes in the last year in, in all these programs. There's an awful lot of wait-and-see type of thing going on right now, whereas before, money was flowing pretty easily. So, you know, we will be looking into those as we, as we get a result on this, on this piece of land.
Okay, good, thanks. Item nine, item A, consider casting a ballot on behalf of the city of Hastings for Brian Boggs, Maureen Donker, Craig Stoltenberg, and Deborah Stewart to serve four-year terms on the Municipal League Workmen's Comp. Fund Board. We're here, motion to, I'll make that motion, Your Honor, cast our ballot?
I will second his motion.
Okay, motion by Rezegi, supported by Stensel Barton to cast a ballot on behalf of the city of Hastings for Brian Boggs, Maureen Donker, Craig, Craig Stoltenberg, and Deborah, Deborah Stewart to serve four-year terms on the Michigan Municipal League Workmen's Comp. Fund Board. Any questions, comments? This is a, this is a good board. I, I think Maureen Donker and Brian Boggs have been on that board, they're just being reappointed, so.
I'm a big fan of Craig. Yeah, you're over there at Middle Bell.
Okay. Okay, no further questions, roll call.
Rocha.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item B, consider approval of the mayor's appointment of Rosemary Anger for the open position on the Hastings Board of Review.
I will make that motion.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Brem, supported by McLean to approve the mayor's appointment of Rosemary Anger for the open position in the Hastings Board of Review. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item C, receiving place on file seven invoice totaling a hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and seventy-four cents.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Motion by Barlow, supported by Deveroy, receiving place on file seven invoice totaling a hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and seventy-four cents. Roll call.
Can we have a discussion real quick, please, Your Honor?
No discussion on these items, these are all budget items.
These are all budget, okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Items of business, second reading, consider adoption of ordinance number six thirty-one, amending chapter twenty-two, article twenty-two dash one, or is that I? I, section twenty-two, one, section twenty-two dash two, and section twenty-two dash three of the Hastings Code to regulate loading sidewalk displays and sidewalk cafes in the city of Hastings.
I'll make the motion to approve the adoption of ordinance six thirty-one, amending chapter twenty-two, article twenty-two, one, sections twenty-two, one, twenty-two, two, twenty-two, three. How'd I do?
Just fine. Do I hear a support?
Support.
Okay, motion made by McLean, supported by Deveroy, to adopt ordinance number six thirty-one. I won't read it again because my colleague just did, but that's fine. Any comments? Roll call.
Barlow.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item B, consider adoption of resolution twenty, twenty-five dash twenty to amend the poverty tax reduction guidelines for the Board of Review of the city of Hastings. Is that your motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Support.
Okay, motion by Stensel Barton, supported by McLean, to adopt resolution twenty, twenty-five dash twenty to amend the poverty tax reduction guidelines for the Board of Review of the city of Hastings. Questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm just curious, the reason this came up, I'm assuming someone took advantage of this situation and it's why the ordinance came up.
Um, so this is related to an application. Currently, there's nothing that's stating that, you know, if a property is owned by multiple people, one of them lives there and is the applicant, the other people who are not living there still benefit.
Right.
And their income isn't included in the application because they're not a part of the household. So this helps clarify that.
Fair enough, thank you.
Any other question? Okay, so we have a motion by Stensel Barton, supported by McLean, to adopt resolution 2025-20 to amend the poverty tax reduction guidelines for the Board of Review for the City of Hastings. No further comment, roll call.
Brem.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Resegi.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item C, consider approval of, under direction of staff, the Hastings Business Connection to hold sidewalk sales on February 01, on Friday, August 15th, and Saturday, August 16th, 2025. In the state of the ordinance, you're not laughing, are you, over there? In state of the ordinance 22-1, section 22-2, by adopting resolution 2025-21. There's a mouthful.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Okay, there you go. Do I hear support?
Support.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Devroy, to approve, under direction of staff, the Hastings Business Connection to hold sidewalk sales on Friday, August 15th, and Saturday, August 16th, 2025, and stay the ordinance in article 22-1, section 22-2, by adopting resolution 2025-21. Questions?
Yeah, just one question. Is this now staying the new adapted ordinance?
This is really, yeah, because it won't go into effect for several more weeks.
Okay, yep.
So you don't have any questions? We have people in the audience who can answer all your questions. I want to know what happened to her hand, but that's all right. Okay, we have a motion and a support to approve Hastings Business Connections to hold sidewalk sales. No further questions, roll call.
McLean.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Resegi.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Next item, consider approval of, under direction of staff, Barry Eaton District Health Department request to hold the maternal and child wellness event in Titan Park from 9:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, motion by Rocha, supported by McLean, to approve, under direction of staff, the Barry Eaton District Health Department's request to hold the maternal and child wellness event in Titan Park from 9:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. Questions, comments? Roll call.
Resegi.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item B, consider approval of, under direction of staff, the request from the Hastings Business Connection, HBC, to amend the location approved as you approved Saturday, August 9th, 2025, Rock the Block Street Party Dance from State Street between Church and Jefferson, Jefferson, between State and Court. The event timeframe on Saturday, August 9th, will remain the same from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., as will the request for the council to consent the street closures on South Jefferson Street between State and Court Streets.
I'll make the motion to, uh...
Approve it.
Yeah.
Support.
Your brain fog's wearing off on me.
Is that Resegi?
Yeah.
Okay, motion made by McLean, supported by Resegi, to approve, under direction of staff, the request from the Hastings Business Connection, HBC, to amend the location of the previously approved Saturday, August 9th, 2025, Rock the Block Street Party Dance. And that originally was for, from State Street, from Church and Jefferson. Now we're going to change it to Jefferson Street between State and Court. The event timeframe on Saturday, August 9th, will remain the same from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., as will the request for council to consent to the street closure on Jefferson Street between State and Court. Any questions? Roll call.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Resegi.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Uh, we have a request from the Central Elementary PTO to accept donations and free will offerings during Stomp 2025 Walkathon fundraiser on Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
I'll make the motion to approve Central Elementary PTO to accept donations and free will offerings during their Stomp Walkathon on Tuesday, September 16th, 2025.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion by McLean, supported by Rocha, to approve Central Elementary's PTO fundraiser for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, from 8 to 3:00 p.m. Questions? Roll call.
Rocha.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Resegi.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item G, consider approval of the Youth Advisory Council to accept donations and free will offerings during the Youth Advisory Council Roofset on Saturday, October 18th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. At the intersection, is that supposed to be 9:00 a.m. to 11:30? Oh, is it, is it a.m.? All right. At the intersection of State and Jefferson Street. I was thinking they're going to do it till midnight. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the Youth Advisory Council to accept donations and free will offerings during the Youth Advisory Council Roofset on Saturday, October 18th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the intersection of State and Jefferson. Support.
Okay, we have a motion by McLean, supported by Devroy, to approve the requests from the Youth Advisory Council. Any questions?
I have a question, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Is this insured in any way? Who covers, I'm all for it, don't get me wrong, but altitude, gravity? Does somebody insure this?
Well, first off, you got, we're going to have them, these people go up there and talk, but you got to remember they're not on a scaffolding anymore. They used to, now they're standing on the ground, right?
So it's a roof sit without a roof.
It's more like a curb sit.
So why don't you go up there and tell us what you're going to do? Tell us who you are.
It's okay, it's good practice.
Ah, you think you're going to sit here all night without talking?
Um, so my name is Megan Skidmore.
And I'm Erica Walowitz.
And we're the 2025 Yak Interns. And we're just trying to get your approval for us to hold the roof sit. And last year, we raised about $4,000 for the Imagination Library. And we've been having the roof sit since 2003, and it's been approved every year. And each year, we pick up a beneficiary to, and like a local nonprofit that the funds go toward. Like last year, we did the Imagination Library. This year, we're doing the Humane Society. And we kind of just sit at the State of Jefferson and State Street. And we kind of sit there with like signs to kind of tell people about it. And when they stop, they can give donations.
We're glad you're not on the roof anymore. I think that's the fun part.
Any, any questions while I've got these young ladies up there? Okay, so we have a motion and a support. Any further questions, comments, roll call.
Devroy.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Resegi.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, entertain a motion to approve the purchase of six ImageCast Precinct 2 in-person voting kits, tabulators, from Election Source to replace the current units in the amount of $33,558.
I'll make the motion to approve that purchase of six ImageCast Precinct 2 in-person voting kits from Election Source. I support it.
Okay, we have a motion by McLean, supported by Devroy, to approve the purchase of six ImageCast Precinct in-person voting kits for $33,558. Questions?
Question. What happens to the old ones?
We're returning them in.
Do we get money for that?
We do. There's a thousand trade-in right there.
I'm sorry, I heard two people talking. We get money back for them.
A thousand dollars each.
Okay, and how long will these six we're getting last?
We hope they make it five years.
Five years?
It's about what our old ones did.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by McLean, supported by Devroy, to approve the purchase for $33,558. Any further comments? Roll call.
Bergeron.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Resegi.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item I, entertain a motion to approve the purchase of two 800-megahertz radios from Seacom Communications of Kalamazoo for $10,056.48.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of two 800-megahertz radios from Seacom Communications of Kalamazoo for $10,056.48. Support.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Barlow, to approve the purchase of two 800-megahertz radios for $10,056.48 from Seacom Communications. Me? Questions?
Yeah, just one question is, are these, these are in addition to, these are new radios, right? These are not replacing anything?
These are replacements.
They're replacements, okay. And what was the, what was the life of the old ones?
So the radios that we have have been there since around 2010, 2012.
Okay, so we, it says 10.
Unfortunately, the state of Michigan, in their wisdom, rolled radios out of service quite frequently. We'll get about 10 to 12 years service out of a radio. So these radios, they work just fine. They're just end of life for the state of Michigan.
Gotcha.
What happens to them?
We can try and sell them out of state. The state, we can't, they can't be used in the state anymore because the state rolled them out, made them unavailable, unprogrammable, put it that way.
Right.
But a lot of the other states, Indiana, Illinois, they still, they still allow those to be used. So we have an option to try and sell them.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion and support to purchase the two radios for $10,056.48. Roll call.
Barlow.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Devroy.
Yes.
Resegi.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. I entertain a motion to approve of the proposal from Water Solve LLC to provide polymer for the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $27,000. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the proposal from Water Solve LLC to provide polymer for the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $27,000.
Do I hear a support?
I'll support.
Stensel Barton?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion made by McLean, supported by Stensel Barton, to approve the purchase of polymer for the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $27,000 from Water Solve LLC. Comments?
What is it? I, I didn't really understand what it is or how it works.
We've got an expert sitting right back there. Burn, tell her what polymers you use.
Sludge, I know.
You missed that tour.
Yeah, I did.
Come down, you can see it anytime.
Okay.
We're there every day.
Okay.
Uh, so the polymer is what we use to coagulate the material before we put it in the truck to help de-water that material. So, I, I mean, it's a, it's a necessary process that we have to do before we haul it to the landfill to try to remove a certain amount of moisture to dry it out.
Okay.
And that's what we use that for.
Does that do anything with the smell, too?
No.
Told you he was an expert. Any other questions while I've got them up there? Okay, thank you, Burn.[1532.49]
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any other comments? No call.
Brem.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Dev Roy.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Uh, next item, entertain a motion to approve of the three-year residential contract renewal in the amount of seventy-four thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty cents and the three-year non-residential contract renewal of forty-six thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-five cents with HydroCorp for cross-connection control program. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the three-year residential contract renewal in the amount of the seventy-four thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty cents and the three-year non-residential contract renewal of forty-six thousand dollars, four hundred ninety-nine, uh, forty-six thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-five cents with HydroCorp for the cross-connection control program.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a support?
I will support her, Your Honor.
Okay, a motion by McLean, supported by Stensel Barton, to approve the three-year residential and the three-year non-residential contract with HydroCorp for the cross-connection control program. Comments?
Yes, so this is, after this, the initial residential will be complete, right? The initial inspection. What are we anticipating after that? Is there additional, obviously, there's additional inspections, so I'm assuming it's going to roll over into secondary or post-residential inspections. Are we anticipating anything like that or are we pretty much done after this?
So there are still going to be two programs. We started with the non-residential because it's higher risk. We started the residential a few years back, but we're still in the process of doing the first inspections for some of them. Once all of them have been inspected, then we'll know how many of them need to be re-inspected. And that's based on the level of risk that they pose to the system, which is determined by how many and what type of connections they have.
Gotcha, thank you.
So, help me out, what's the difference between residential and non-residential in terms of their contract?
Um, what's involved in each inspection?
Well, obviously, they're doing more for the residential contract than they are for the non-residential.
Well, there's a lot more of them, sure.
That's the only thing I didn't understand in the thing. I've read through all their stuff, but-
Right, because they have to go through, I don't know that they do a full inspection of all the houses, but they look and see what they have and then determine whether or not they need to have an inspection. But we have many more residences than commercial structures.
Oh, now I understand.
Oh, hot backup here.
Yes, sir.
Explain, explain what they're looking for in residential and explain what they're looking for in commercial. I, I, I know, but-
Yeah, we don't know.
I hear the question here.
Right, no, residential's, we're doing external residential inspections only. So they have to go to every residential home in our community and inspect the outside of the home. They're looking for hose bib vacuum breakers or irrigation system, sprinkler systems for the yard. Um, if they find that, then they have to do follow-up letters to those homes. They also leave two, I believe it's two, in the contract it states that they'll leave two backflow preventers, hose bib vacuum breakers at each residential home as well. That's included. Um, there is, as Sarah pointed out, a lot more residential homes and they have to go around each home looking for these things. They do not go inside the homes. The commercial, we do go inside each commercial, non-residential, we call them non-residential-
It's very confusing.
-users. And so every business in town will get a letter and an intent to inspect, and they're internally looking for anything that's inside, um, beverage dispensers, soap dispensers, water closets that have mop sinks that don't have, maybe don't have a backflow preventer or have a hose dangling down into a mop bucket. So they're, they're, they've already done, they've been doing that for a while now. Uh, the residential ones are all brand-new and that's why the price is, is so much more for the residential. Once that residential's done, as the city manager pointed out, they will be backing down on those and then we'll have a list of homes that will have to be re-inspected every five years, I believe it is.
So, those things that they brought around, what are they detecting on the residential?
The hose bib vacuum breakers?
Yeah.
They're not detecting anything, they're to keep water from back siphoning into our system or into your home.
Oh.
If you have a, let's say your garden hose is laying out there and it's turned on and you have it just laying in a mud puddle, this backflow preventer prevents that dirty water from getting into the water system.
Oh, okay, I gotcha.
So, question I got, we have a lot of rental property around town, do you catch yourself going back and re-inspecting that? You know, because you get a new renter, you know, first thing you know, they're going to take the hose off and, you know, maybe they figure they're not getting enough pressure so they take that back, backflow preventer off there. Or is that, is the city requiring that the backflow preventer be built into the hose bib?
There, there is a plumbing code. I couldn't even tell you what the plumbing code is, honestly, but I, I believe all new homes have to be, he could probably tell you better than I could, all new homes have to have a backflow preventer on their outside hose bibs. Now, um, as far as a hose being hooked up to an outside faucet, I mean, that's legal.
Right.
Residential owners can do it. We're, we're looking to create a barrier between that possible cross-connection or back siphonage in our distribution system.
Okay.
That's the intent of them.
Any other questions? How much information you bring to us? Thank you, Byrne.
You're welcome.
So, we had a, we had a motion and a support to approve the contracts. Do we, any other comments? No call.
McLean.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Dev Roy.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Uh, in your packet, entertain a motion to approve the purchase and installation of a nine-foot galleon dump body on a two thousand fourteen Dodge five-five-hundred, uh, by Truck and Trailer Specialties in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars.
I'll make the motion to approve that purchase and installation.
Do I hear a support?
Support.
Okay, a motion made by McLean, supported by Dev Roy, to approve the purchase and installation of a nine-foot galleon dump body on a twenty-twenty-four Dodge five-five-hundred truck, uh, from Truck and Trailer Specialties in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars. Comments, questions?
I have a question, Mr. Neal. Um, you're buying a sixteen thousand dollar, you're buying a sixteen thousand dollar dump car. Are we going to have to, this is a two thousand fourteen truck that's eleven years old, are we going to be replacing that truck? Wouldn't it be, couldn't we get the whole thing all together?
Our intention, my intention is to extend the life of this truck by probably three to five years, what I'm guessing. The truck itself is in really good shape.
Oh, yeah.
We've had very little trouble with, with this truck. Um, the box itself is a different, the one that's on there, um, was a different style when they made them, they actually had, uh, little catchalls in there where they'd hold salt and everything, and salt would get up in there and that's why it's rusting out so bad. We have tried to repair it in the past, uh, but it just doesn't hold up.
Right, and the two photos you have, I assumed it was salt that was eating through this and I would be worried about the frame underneath, but you're saying the truck can last another three to five years with this new box?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No call.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
No.
Barlow.
Yes.
Dev Roy.
Yeah.
McLean.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item M, consider approval of the proposal from Power Plus Cars and Accessories for the purchase of a utility cart for the wastewater facility in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support it.
Okay, a motion by Brem, supported by McLean, to approve, uh, the proposal from Power Plus Cars and Accessories for purchase of a, of a utility cart for the wastewater treatment facility in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Questions?
Do we currently have a cart for, what would we be using it for?
Well, it says in your packet that they normally would use a half-ton pickup truck that's not, not, uh, uh, it's, it's not a well-use of that truck because some of the spots they have to go, they can't get in there with it. This is going to be like a, a golf cart with a dump box on the back and they'll be able to haul all their equipment around any place. If you've ever been down to the plant, some of those spots, you can barely get a human through there, so.
I have.
You know, and if you can get your equipment closer to the job, it makes a lot easier, more efficient to do that job.
Does this include a, a charging station or is this a gas-powered vehicle? I'm looking at it, I haven't read the entire specs.
It's electric.
So, electric, so is the charging station included?
It's just plugs in. It has a trickle charger built in.
Oh, it's a trickle charge?
Correct.
Oh, all right, all right.
It's like a golf cart.
It is a golf cart.
Yeah, it's a golf cart.
Mike wants to go golfing. Any other questions?
And this is, this was included in the budget, correct, yes.
I asked that of Byrne because I thought we, like, saw it somewhere before and it was in the budget, so. Any other questions? No call.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Dev Roy.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Uh, consider approval of the sale of two six-point-nine-yard V-bottom salt spreaders and one twenty-twelve four-by-four Dodge three-five-hundred HD service truck, uh, due to recent equipment updates to reimburse the equipment fund for anticipated sales exceeding five thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
I'll support.
Okay, a motion by Stensel Barton, supported by McLean, to approve the sale of two six-point-nine-yard V-bottom salt spreaders and one twenty-twelve four-by-four Dodge three-five-zero HD service truck, due to recent, uh, equipment updates to reimburse the equipment fund for anticipated sales exceeding five thousand dollars. Any questions?
That doesn't mean they're going to sell it for that, does it?
Pardon me?
It just exceeds five thousand.
Anything over five thousand dollars, they have to get our approval for the sale of it.
Yeah.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. No call.
Rocha.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Dev Roy.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Uh, entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a twenty-twenty-six International HB six-oh-seven tandem axle cab and chassis from West Michigan International for a hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents and truck uplifted from Truck and Trailer for a fourteen-foot dump box for the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of a twenty-twenty-six International HV six-oh-seven tandem axle cab and chassis from West Michigan International for a hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents and truck uplifted from Truck and Trailer Specialties, Inc., for a fourteen-foot dump box for the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars.
I have a motion, do I hear a support?
Support.
Okay, a motion by McLean, supported by Dev Roy, to approve the purchase of a twenty-twenty-six International, uh, and for a hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and eighteen fifty and uplifting, uh, Truck and Trailer for forty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars. Questions?
What's the lifespan of this truck?
Do I hear some?
Uh, lifespan of this truck is probably going to be right around fifteen to twenty years, um, possibly more. Uh, this truck will get used, uh, a lot for some jobs that we do, including leaf pickup and dirt hauling, which will haul twice as much as the, uh, some of the other trucks that we have now. Um, makes it more efficient for us, um, and what we're going to, what I want to do with this truck, too, as part of the outfit, is currently, at the wastewater plant, they had a truck built last year, um, which was a special build, had, you know, lower cab, lower, um, tarp system and airbag system and stuff. I want to have this truck built so that it is a sister truck to that one, so that if something happens to that truck down there, then they'll have something else to take them back inside and they'll, because currently they don't have anything that will fit inside. So if there's an issue with that truck, they either got to rent a dumpster or a skid steer and take it out in the dry moment, so I figured we could get, it would be a nice backup.
Thank you.
So, my, my question is, it's, I'm, it's, it's an awful lot of money, uh, for a truck and it, it looks like, according to the background information, there really isn't anything because we're to use the twenty, the two-thousand truck as a backup, so it doesn't look like there's anything with fifty-six thousand miles, the backup truck seems to be in, in pretty decent shape. Um, what do you anticipate the savings overall when you're, when you're talking about labor, when you're talking about fuel efficiency, when you're talking about having a backup so you don't have to purchase or rent a dumpster? Because when I'm looking at this amount, i- if it's comparable and we're, we're saving quite a bit on the back end, then this makes sense, but if it's, if it's just barely making it, I, I don't know if I can swing that way. So I, I just, what, what are we looking at in cost savings here?
As far as dollar amount, I'm not sure, but what I can tell you is, like, if we're over picking up leaves on the south side of town, um, we can haul two, about two and a half loads with that one truck compared to our other trucks, which only haul six yards. Um, with that, as well as this one will haul fifteen yards of dirt, you know, there and back, so coming back, it'll save a trip for fuel. I mean, overall savings, I can't say for sure because every job is different, but I would say overall, it will be no issue to get the money back, um, over time.
In the savings and over time and the rentals of different things and things of that nature.
Yeah.
That's, that's my, that's my biggest concern, is that. Thank you.
Truck number twelve.
Yes.
I think that's one of the last trucks I bought before I retired.
Yes, it is. Be glad to hear of it.
I didn't hear that, I didn't hear that. Do you want to repeat it? No, Rob likes to mess with me, but, uh, this, this truck, originally, when we bought this truck back in, uh, was it two thousand? Uh, was purchased as a salt truck and one of the reasons they took the underbody, the, the grater blade and all that stuff off so that they could utilize it even though the body was shot on it. So, they've been, they've done real well to get this truck to twenty years, so, you know, and, uh, did we, we budgeted for this two years, right?
Yes.
I think you budgeted one sixty and it went over just a few thousand.
But we also saved on the dump box, so, yes.
Any other questions? We have motion and support. Any other comments? No call.
Dev Roy.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Okay, item A, potential community land trust option for Hayes Orchard Property. Who wants to talk about this?
Um, I will. So I've included some, uh, basic information about community land trust. We were approached by the community foundation asking if that was something that we might be interested in pursuing, uh, for the property at Hayes and Orchard Street. Essentially, uh, the trust would own the land and the houses themselves could be sold. Um, and while they gain in value when they're sold again in the future, the owner retains a portion of the profit that's made on that house while the rest goes back into the land trust to, um, maintain affordable housing for subsequent buyers. So, it's a unique, uh, strategy that allows for long-term affordable housing. Um, I believe the trust is for ninety or a hundred years, somewhere in there, um, and it promotes homeownership. Um, there are a lot of affordable housing, um, programs that are focused on rental housing. Um, this is one of the, uh, strategies that focuses on, um, homeownership. So, um, i- it's an option if you're interested in looking at it. Um, we can get some additional information and have someone come in and talk about it further if you want. Um, but as you've heard this evening, uh, the two developers who had submitted proposals for this property, neither of them are interested in this particular option. So, if you did want to learn more, move forward with the land trust, if that was your ultimate decision, um, we probably have to look for a different developer, um, to work with if neither of the parties are, are interested in that. So, um, whether it's a, a new opportunity that is something you want to look at or you feel like it's more of a monkey wrench because we'd already started going through a different process and have interested parties, um, that's really up to you whether you're interested in, in pursuing that option further or not. Um, but just wanted to make you aware that that suggestion had been offered for the property as well.
Anybody have any questions?
No questions, but I can't see that either builder want, don't want this at this point. We don't even need to look into it.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to learning more about it for future projects. I agree. Um, because I don't know much about it and it, it seems very interesting, but I feel like they're here, they've done their homework and, but I don't want to rule it out for the future.
Sure.
Any other comments?
I want to say what she said because she said it so eloquently.
Thank you.
So, I'm repeating what she said.
Okay.
Okay, and now with the questions, we'll move on.[1609.12] Item B, developer proposal comparison for parcel 05-55-240-0105-00 Hayes Orchard Property. We've heard both proposals. Do I have a motion either way?
I'll make a motion to go with Mark Helder.
I'll support.
Okay, motion, motion by Rezegi, supported by McLean.
So just to clarify, what exactly is the action that we're, we're taking? To negotiate a purchase and development agreement?
Yes, okay.
Motion made by Rezegi, supported by McLean, to authorize the city manager to negotiate a buy-sell agreement, development agreement? Is that what you want, Sarah?
Um, yeah, purchase and development agreement.
Comments?
I would like to thank Mr. Parkus for coming in, I mean, I really enjoyed it. And I'm glad you were here too, Mark. Any other comments? I've seen your side of it as well.
Any other comment, go call.
Barlow?
Yes.
Rocha?
Yes.
Devroy?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Rezegi?
Yes.
Stensel Barton?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Brem?
Yes.
Tassava?
Yes.
City manager report.
Um, so a few things for you this evening. First of all, just a reminder, if you have a city-owned laptop that you're using, if you could remember to turn it on and make sure that it's getting updates every little bit, that would be really helpful. I am getting some notices from our IT support that some of the computers don't seem to be getting their updates or, or being in use enough to do so. So if you could remember to turn those on and make sure that they're getting updates. And if you're finding that it's not something that you're using, feel free to bring it back to City Hall, and we can make use of it elsewhere. I also wanted to let you know that I did confirm with the county treasurer's office that they have approved our application on the first writ of refusal for 133 East State at the minimum bid. So, I believe we sent the check in.
Yep.
So, we've submitted payment for that, we have not received the deed yet, but we anticipate having that in the next few weeks. So, that's all I have, unless somebody has any questions for me.
Any questions, Sarah? Okay, also in the manager report, we have Chief Boulder's monthly report. And as always, Dale wants to get up and...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Long agenda, we're gonna make it a little longer tonight.
All right.
Just kidding. Anyway, Dan's gonna bring up something that really is pretty important. Tomorrow, we're gonna be doing crossing guard training. I have four returners, and as you've seen, hopefully it made it in my report, I believe it, Sarah. We're looking for more. So, we have four, we need two more. We have some that may not start out at the beginning of the year due to some, some health issues, but, you know, obviously currently, you know, there's certain areas that we have to cover. I think we've talked about this before. We're kind of in this spot where it's, it's a tough position to fill because of the, the times that we're asking them to do it. Not any less important, obviously, but, you know, I'll take anybody at this point, and not really anybody, but anybody that'll pass my background. You know, because obviously, we want the right people being crossing guards. So, so if, if anybody, if you guys know of anybody, have them contact us. There's, there should be flyers floating around the city right now. And Dan, was it, could you find it in there? If we could pull it up there, it might be one of the attachments there. I think it's a, it's a separate attachment, possibly. That's, that's what I really, there, there it is, right there. That's one the deputy chief made up for me. That's, you're gonna see floating around, it has some information on it. If I could get everyone's help spreading that word, again, it's tough. If they can only do the morning shift, I'll take them. If they only do the afternoon shift, I'll take them. You know, when, when we're filling these spots, they're being filled by officers, they're being filled by myself. Again, not that I'm, I'm complaining about having to fill that spot, but these spots are really in, in dire need. So, also, we'll have them here tomorrow for the required four-hour training per statute. So, i- if you find anybody tonight, shoot them my number. We'll, we'll get them, we'll get them taken care of. So, other than that, that's really, you know, I always like to talk about my people, they're, they're doing awesome. You know, they're doing great, they're doing better than I am. They make me look good, so, you know, and so I'm here to answer any questions also, if you guys have any, based upon my report. Yes, sir?
Could you email that to us, the PDF?
Will do, yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Yep. That's all I have, sir.
Any other questions of Dale? There gotta be a question out there.
I already asked it.
Thank Dale.
Thank you, thanks, Dave.
Also in your packet, city clerk treasurer Perrin's monthly financial report. Anything to add, Linda?
I do not.
Community development director King's monthly reports in your packet. Anything to add, Dan?
I have nothing else to add.
Department of Public Works street superintendent Neil's report. Anything to add, Rob?
Yes, sir.
Say something nice, will you?
So I just wanted to update you on a couple of things. We did get the old salt barn, that is down, demolished. We're working on the cement right now. We have the engineer coming in, maybe the end of the week, he's thinking. But we're hoping to start groundbreaking for that, their groundbreaking, somewhere mid-August is what he's shooting for. The other thing, a couple of other things I wanna update you on is I have ordered the loader. Actually Caterpillar got ahold of me and was curious to see if we wanted one that was already on the lot, which is actually a little bit better than the one that we ordered. So we're actually getting a little better bang for our buck on our purchase. And the other biggest thing I wanna say too is, I'll piggyback off of Dale, you know, our, our staff is doing an awesome job. The staff that's working on lead services and all over, which is a team effort from everybody, have done an amazing job with lead services. Those of you that don't, don't know, or didn't see my report, they've done 101 services since July last year. And that for three to four, sometimes a two-man crew, is quite a lot. And there's not many municipalities out there right now that are doing it themselves. A lot of them are contracting it out, so we're saving quite a bit of money until the state decides to change things again. And that's all I have.
Any questions of Rob while he's up there? Thanks, Rob. Reports of communication, item A, Hastings DDA strategic plan kickoff meeting minutes of July 14, 2025. Item B, City of Hastings Downtown Development Authority bat, draft meeting minutes of July 17, 2025. Entertainer motion to accept and place those two items on file.
Your Honor, I'll make that motion for you.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Barlow, to accept item A and item B and place on file. All in favor, say aye.
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 Same. Item 14, public comment, at this time, anybody like it up, address the public, or address us? Let's call us who you are, it'll be three minutes. It's quite a night.
Words are hard.
Okay, mayor and council comment, any comment tonight, Mike? No, Your Honor. John?
No comment.
Man? Jackie?
No.
Well, I gotta, I wanna thank Jody, she helped us out at the fair. Mike Bergeron, Ann Devroy, John Rezegi, I was there for a little time, but I wasn't able to spend as much time as I'd like to out there. But I wanna really thank former mayor Frank Cantwell. A lot of the time that I should've been out there, Frank stepped up, and he, he definitely represents the city well yet. And I just don't wanna, and I told him I didn't wanna work him too hard where I killed the guy, but I really appreciate everybody stepping up and putting a little time in at the fair. Any comment tonight?
Yes, sir.
Norman?
Yes, sir.
Jerry?
I have nothing, sir.
John?
I'm just gonna go ahead and make up a proclamation that the rest of this council should certainly donate $125 for Tangle Town. I would like to go ahead and put one picket there, and if every member here on this council would donate it, it'd be a thousand dollars, a little over a thousand dollars for Tangle Town, and love to have your support.
So you wanna put it up front, we'll pay you, is that what you want?
Or, or you can pay, Sarah, I, I can put it up front, and you can pay me, I'm fine with that, too.
His direct funds to the community foundation.
You got four?
Man, well, five sounds mighty awesome, so. That's all I have.
Well, I, I would hope everybody would support this, agree to, you know. And I don't know if Sarah, bit off more than she can chew. I think this is gonna be a pretty good endeavor, and I, and I think the community will stand up behind you. I really do, so. Anything else? Consider recessing into closed session at the conclusion of the regular business as permitted by Public Act 267 of 1976, section 15 dot 268 dash 8H, to consider collective bargaining agreement and discussion.
I'll make the motion to go on the closed session.
I support.
You supported that?
Yeah.
Motion by McLean, supported by Rocha, to go into closed session at the conclusion of the regular business as permitted by Public Act 267 of 1976, section 15 dot 268 dash 8H, to consider collective bargaining agreement discussion. Go call.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Brem?
Yes.
Devroy?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Rezegi?
Yes.
Rocha?
Yes.